The roll call this evening, all directors are here with the exception of Todd Sorensen. Do I have a motion for the approval of tonight's agenda?
So moved.
I'm having a brain freeze for a second. By Dan, second?
Second.
By Chad. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, that passes six zero. The consent agenda, the consent agenda items are considered routine in nature and will be enacted in one motion. Tonight's consent agenda consists of the approval of the school board minutes from the joint board meeting with the city of Savage on August 10th, the regular board meeting on August 10th as well, resignations, terminations, and non-renewals as listed. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
So moved.
By Rich, second?
Second.
By Ben. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes six zero. Next up is the resolution for the acceptance of gifts. We don't need to read each item, but the gifts are listed in our board packet. Do I have a motion to accept the resolution for the gifts as listed?
So moved.
By Chad, second?
Second.
Alright, by Dan, this is a roll call vote. Chad?
Aye.
Ben?
Aye.
Dan?
Aye.
Aye. Rich?
Aye.
Melissa?
Aye.
That passes six zero. No Laker pride tonight, and so then it's on to the open forum. And this is a 15-minute time period set aside for any citizen, for us to receive input through this moment in time. So do we have anyone that would like to address the board this evening? Okay, seeing none. Onto personal items. Matt?
Thank you. Good evening, members of the board and Dr. Stallow. First up, I recommend the following candidates for employment and him seeking board approval.
Alright, do I have a motion to accept the candidates for employment?
So moved.
By Dan, second?
I'll second.
By Melissa. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes six zero.
And next, I present the retirement of Linda Gurrell, who is retiring as a special education secretary, and she's been at the high school for 13 years.
Alright, do I have a motion to accept the retirement?
So moved.
By Ben, second?
Second.
By Chad. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, that passes six zero as well.
And next, I present the following leave of absence and him seeking board approval.
Alright, do I have a motion to approve the leave of absence as listed?
So moved.
By Dan, second?
Second.
By Ben. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes six zero as well.
And next, I have a certified staffing request. This is two different requests. First of all, in our school readiness or preschool program, I'm requesting 1.29 FTE, which will add four sections of preschool, and that's due to the overall growth in our preschool program, and then also our very popular extended day preschool program that we offered for the first time last year. And then, we're also looking to get approval for one FTE in elementary staffing as well. And we've seen that we've now hit our budgeted number for student enrollment at the elementary level, and we anticipate that climbing here even at the very end. And so just to make sure that we have just that one FTE in the hole to plug, to plug the hole that we know that we'll find here at the end, I'm requesting one additional FTE at the elementary level.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the additional staffing as listed?
I will make that motion.
Rich, second?
Second.
By Ben. Any questions? I just have a question. The school readiness, do, I mean, I know you're attributing it to growth. Is there some new programming other than the after-school or?
It's the extended day is really the new programming there, but you know, some of this is attributable to offering our programming in a different way in that I think families have felt a need for additional support, and now that we're offering options beyond just a traditional two and three day, that's seen the population there rise. And so it's a continued growth in community interest in those new offerings there.
Okay. I mean, I'm excited to see that because I think that's, I haven't seen that in years past that it's been that.
No, it's very exciting. This is a much bigger gain than we've seen in the past. We've also offered the environmental programming for the school readiness, which has been tremendously popular as well.
Great, great job for those people. Alright, any other questions? I guess I have one more. Sorry. Julie, what did we, what are we up by then elementary-wise for enrollment?
I will talk about it later in the board agenda, but just so that you know, for elementary, we are up 18 from what we originally budgeted.
Okay.
So we are definitely in need of that one additional. By the time school starts, we'll definitely know where we will want to put that person.
Because from this point on, we're still usually in gaining, right?
We are still usually gaining these last two weeks before school starts.
Alright. No other questions? No other ones from me? So alright. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
That passes six zero.
Alright, and next up is a staffing request on the educational support staff side, and there's a number of these, so I'll go through them quickly. We're looking for additional kids company assistance, and that is due to, again, the growth and interest at Edgewood in those pre-K programs, and then also just the size that we've seen at Redtail Ridge. And so we're looking for a number of kids company assistants in those two, at those two sites. And then we're also looking for a youth program assistant, and this is for our WAVE program, which is the kids company program for middle schoolers, which we've also seen a very nice growth and interest there. And then we're looking for three new noon supervisors at Edgewood, Redtail Ridge, and Glendale, one apiece. And that is due to enrollment and then the new lunch offering at Edgewood.
Alright, do I have a motion to approve the additional staffing for the educational support staff?
So moved.
By Dan, second?
I'll second.
By Melissa. Any questions? Alright, seeing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes six zero as well.
And next up, I am recommending a change to our substitute teacher pay rate for the 2015-16 school year. We have fallen behind a little bit geographically, but this has been changing from year to year. And as you can see there, the going rate in our area is $120 as a daily rate. We're at $115, which definitely puts us at a competitive disadvantage. I'm confident that at this point in the year, well, after we make this change, we'll be able to be competitive this year, that the numbers will really be relatively set at that point. This is one of a number of efforts that we're trying, that we're implementing to try to stay ahead of the game when it comes to attracting substitute teachers in the district, because it certainly, as I've made you aware, it's a problem that local school districts are certainly facing. And so this, along with building subs, which will continue to monitor the need for building subs, is just one of the tools that we have at our disposal to try to address that need.
Okay, do I have a motion to approve the substitute teacher pay rate for 2015-16?
So moved.
By Ben, second?
Second.
By Chad. Any questions? Alright, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes six zero.
And next, I present a very long list of job descriptions for review. And we have such a long list, for the most part, because we really wanted to tackle all of our job descriptions in the secretaries unit. And so it was long overdue to see that we had a comprehensive revision there. And so that's, that accounts for the majority of the job descriptions coming through. We also went back and looked at what else do we need to do for some cleanup here? And so there shouldn't be anything tremendously new on this list, just some minor changes that we've made.
Alright, do I have a motion to approve the revised job descriptions as listed?
So moved.
By Dan, second?
I'll second the motion.
By Rich, any questions? Alright, seeing none. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes six zero. Alright, and on to old business, the innovation zone presentation. Dr. Holmberg.
Good evening, Chair Ruel, members of the board, Dr. Stallow. I'm here tonight with a couple of items, first of which is a follow-up from our August 10th meeting. We have the agreement to share educational services that was presented to you in that board packet as a first read. I'm back seeking board approval to move forward with that relationship with Lakeville. And then second of all, I have an individual that I'm going to be introducing to you shortly.
Do I have a motion, any questions on the agreement? I didn't receive any, so I'm assuming we're hunky-dory.
Yep.
Alright. Do I have a motion to accept the, I'm gonna get the name right here. Not really called anything, is it? An agreement, an educational agreement between Lakeville and Prior Lake Savage for the innovation zone. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
By Melissa, second?
Second.
By Chad. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes six zero.
Very good, thank you. I'd also like to take a few moments, like to invite Melanie Spina up to the podium to introduce to you, at the last August 10th meeting, I also came forward with a job description and that we were going to be posting, and moving forward with hiring and looking for an advanced program studies innovation zone coordinator. Dr. Stallow and I participated with Dr. Lisa Schneider and another, and the interview team in looking at our pool of applicants, interviewing very solid candidates and looking at their qualifications, and we're pleased to be able to announce Melanie's hiring. Just want to give a couple of short comments of how Melanie stood out above the rest before I turn it over to her to say a few short words. Melanie is a current Lakeville South teacher in communications in Avid, and she's been there since 2007. She'll talk, I'm sure she can talk a little bit about Avid, but just with the goals of that program, their mission is to close the achievement gap and prepare students for college and career readiness. And that's the experience and background that we are definitely looking for with our advanced program studies, that skill set. She also has an extensive background and skill set in curriculum development, not just within the communications department, but interdisciplinary as well. Technology integration, data analysis, looking at student achievement, collaborating with others, and setting forth goals and strategies to increase student achievement, particularly all students, including students in the subcategories as well. Extensive skill set in professional development, teacher leader, leadership, and collaboration. And one of the things that I really enjoyed hearing about Melanie that she shared at the interview was her connections with corporations and business, and how she brought those connections in to work with her students in the Avid program. And so I'm pleased tonight to be able to introduce her to you. She is, just some technicalities here, she is a Lakeville South teacher, so she's currently under a Lakeville South contract. And so why it's not coming to the board for approval tonight is as part of our agreement to share educational services, it basically, it would look like a consultative where we would be funding portion of Melanie's position through this year of study. So this is an introduction this evening, and I'd like to turn it over to Melanie to say a few words.
Wonderful. Thank you, thank you so much. I am just thrilled to be here. Thank you for letting me come and meeting all of you, and this is just a great opportunity. I was blown away when this came about, that this job is coming and this program for everyone, and seeing Prior Lake Savage schools with Lakeville working together, the high schools, all three of them. It's gonna be great to see all the kids come together and find what truly is best for the students. So I am very excited and ready to hit the ground running and get this thing going. So I appreciate the time that you let me come tonight and see you and meet you, and I look forward to working with you in the future. So, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I'm sure we'll be seeing her throughout the year.
Down running, she'll have a variety of meetings.
She's got a long list, so, yeah, we're excited. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, next up is Prior Lake High School handbook changes. Mr. Lund? Did I miss something? I'm sorry.
Food services.
Excuse me, sorry.
Sit down, Dave.
Sorry, Dave. I'm so sorry, Janine. The food service report. For some reason, I thought the innovation zone was new business, so, okay. Welcome.
Thank you. I feel important, thank you. Alright, well, thank you for having me tonight. I really appreciate it. Here I am again, talking about food services. So hopefully you're not getting too sick of me, but I've got some exciting things to tell you about this year. So I'll just take a few minutes to do that, and what we're doing in 2015-16 in food services. So I've been with this district for seven months now, and really have had the chance to witness some great things going on already. Some things already happening with our staff, great things they've been doing for many years in the past. So we're gonna enhance on that this year. And, you know, the decision to opt out of the program at the high school, of course, as you know, has already been made. But we're doing a lot more than just that this year, so I'll get into that in just a second. The potential within our team is very exciting, and lots of new adventures coming this year. So with the help of our awesome communications department, we hope to really reveal these great things to you here tonight, but also to our public throughout the year. I'm not sure if our community is aware of all the great things going on. So with their help, we'll be doing a lot of work through social media, our website, and other ways to communicate to them. And we heard on our surveys this year that they would like us to, they would like nutrition services to communicate more. So that's what we plan on doing. What we're gonna focus on this year in three areas, quality, communication, and of course, as always, financial stability. Alright, so starting off, we strongly believe that healthy eating fuels healthy minds. We don't just put food in front of the kids, we nourish them and teach them healthy eating. So we decided we wanted our name to really reflect what we do. And, ta-da. Well, that worked a little bit better in my office, but anyways, child nutrition services is what we came up with. What we do, we teach them healthy eating habits, we teach them where their food comes from, assist children with their special diet needs, and give them meals that are safe. So it really includes a lot more than just putting food in front of kids every day. That, of course, will also in turn change some titles, which Matt and I will be going over with you next month with job descriptions, going over job descriptions. But until then, our name change will now be incorporated into everything we do. So it will be child nutrition director, child nutrition assistant part-time, child nutrition assistant, child nutrition assistant site manager, and child nutrition site manager, and I plan to just say CNS. Just shorten that up a little bit. And this one was really exciting for us. A team and effort with Kristy and Ashley from communications and Julie. We worked with a designer to put together a new logo, and a lot of work went into this, been pretty exciting. We wanted a logo that incorporated what we want, wanted our program to represent and what we thought we, thought it does represent. And those things are being fresh, nutritious, choice, and variety, homemade, quality, eco-friendly, and welcoming. And so we came up, well, we didn't come up with, the designer came up with, she gave us lots of choices, but we felt this really reflected all of those things, which is what our program represents. So with that new logo, we wanted a new look as well. We have new uniforms for our staff, and our logo will also be on this new uniform. It'll be on the, on the apron there as you see. So it's really a more fresh, clean, and uniform look, which is what we represent. So we hope our students notice our new look this year. We also looked at the key requests from our spring survey, when we thought about, well, what else needs to change in our program? So what some of our students and parents have said is they want more fresh foods and a salad bar with fruits and veggies, they said would be great. We've put much of our commodity allotment dollars into fresh fruits and vegetables this year. The Department of Defense, which is the nation's oldest and largest government agency, and by the way, largest employer, not only helps keep our country safe, but they also supply fresh fruits and vegetables. You can believe it. So this program, we put our, like I said, our commodity allotment into this program, and we'll be getting fresh fruits and vegetables via our commodity dollars. We're starting a salad bar at the high school, and we are also doing garden stations at every other school, all middle schools and elementary schools, so kids can have access to a variety of fresh vegetables every day. Alright, Schoology will also be throughout the year doing some nutrition education using Schoology. We're going to increase communication to our customers in our high school cafeteria by using digital menu boards. That was a big request off the survey and the focus groups. And also more labeling, nutritional labeling, so that students can make an informed decision when they're in the cafeteria. They can look at the label and make the choice for themselves and know what's in their food before they're buying it. And also more nutritional information on our website. And I'd like to just quickly go to that website and show you what our new menus look like. So there'll be a link on our website that parents and students can access. And let's just say we're going into Glendale. This is what will come up, and they click on the month. And then here's our menu for them. Tells them the choices, tells them the sides, what all comes with their meal. But then, as parents and students can hover over each item, they can see a picture of what the food looks like, a description, the nutrients, whether it's whole grain or it's homemade, and also at the, whoops. Let me show you here. Also at the bottom here, they can rate the food. So if they have it and they say, oh, that's not good, don't serve it again, they can give us a rating and we'll get that instant feedback. So we think that'll be a good way to really tap into what our customers think and what they want and don't want. Some other things to note is, well, I'm not seeing it now. It is there, but for some reason it's not. Each food, as you click on it, will have what allergens are in that food. So as they hover over the food, they'll know if it has gluten, if it has soy, whatever. I don't see it on this one.
Off the left, isn't it? Off the right.
Well, that is another place you can view it. It should be on each item, and it was when I looked at it earlier, but I'll figure out why it's not. But also this button right here, if a parent has a student with an allergy, let's say, well, first of all, they have to agree to this statement that says, you know, terms and condition of use. We're, products sometimes get subbed on a moment's notice, and not always does our vendor let us know if something's getting subbed. So this disclaimer is just alerting our parents to the fact that that happens, basically. So if you're a parent with a student of, let's say, a milk allergy and an egg allergy, as you can see, as they click on the allergens, and it's maybe kind of hard for you to see, but it does cross off each menu item that would not be good for their child because it does contain that allergen. So this hopefully will be very helpful to those families who have that need. We also have diabetic children. And our nursing staff needs carb counts on a daily basis to assist those children. And when you click on the icon that said carb counts, it brings this up. They just move back and forth to which day they need, and it shows every single item and how many carbohydrates are in that item. They can print this out, so it's very easy for them. But there's also always the option of just hovering over the item itself and knowing how many carbohydrates are in it as well. So there's several different options. And then we'll have the ability to give them other, you know, information via our menu. There's also a link to an app, so they can have it on their phone as well. Do you have any questions about this website at all?
Does the app show, sorry, does the app show the daily menu?
It does.
Or does it show the, so everything you're seeing there basically is displayed on the app then?
It is, and I have the ability to turn some things off if I wanted to, but we're gonna see how it goes and maybe tweak it as we go with what people like and don't like. Right now I have pretty much everything showing on the app.
In the future, is there any way for students to say what they're thinking of eating, so you'd have some idea of the demand?
That would be nice. Well, bring that up to the programmer, to like pre-chose.
Yeah, or just say this is what I'm interested in. I didn't know if that would be an option or not with a program or not, because sure often you have no idea what's gonna attract your attention.
But we do have other ways that we plan on getting our customer feedback this year. We're gonna do another survey this spring, and we're having at least two focus groups at every school this year to have just some one-on-ones with students as far as getting to know what they like and don't like and having a conversation with them. So that's what we're gonna do for now, but that might be a nice program enhancement in the future.
Melissa?
I was thinking, can we incorporate the iPad minis, since we rolled those out at the high school level, to be able to survey them even, you know, a day or two before, what are your takes on this menu? And to get your, like you were saying, the tally of, or the read of who's gonna like what menu piece.
Would really reduce a lot of waste if you know a general idea of what's, you know, I'm sure you already have a pretty general idea, but know what kids are really wanting that day, because.
Well, in my experience, and this is especially true with the elementary kids, they change their mind the minute they get in line. Because, you know, they see what it, you know, what it really looks like. So it does help to a point, that's for sure, and it is only so good of a tool to do it that way. But, um, yeah, I know what you're saying.
High school. Yeah, I know, elementary, I can't plan.
Our managers at our, at our middles and high schools work pretty hard to batch, so they're not overproducing to where they have a ton of extra. They were doing that before I got here. They're gonna continue to do that. So there's lots of pluses to that. It's hot, it's fresh, and there's no overproduction.
Questions? I had a question. Have you rolled this out to staff, or are they aware of the changes?
They will be as of Wednesday and Thursday. That's when our workshops are. I alluded to it last year, because we knew, already knew last year we were gonna implement it. So they've had a taste of it, but they will know more this week. We'll go over it in detail. So they'll be answer, able to answer questions to parents as well.
Yeah, I was just wondering what kind of feedback they had, if they had any.
They like it. So the thing about it is we need to be very careful with staying on top of our allergens and our labels and all that. So it's really important that we are giving the most accurate information to our public. So there's, there's a lot of work on the backside of it, but it's so worth it, and our customers are telling us that's what they want, so.
Well, I'm really, I, I think it's awesome. I mean, I like, from everything, from the outfits to the name changes to the title changes, I think it's really given it a sharp new look, and I, I think the parents are really gonna appreciate it. Because I know there's been, you know, I've gotten feedback from the public about wanting more things for allergens and things like that. So I think, you know, there's definitely a need out there, and this will, you know, hopefully take care of all of that, so.
Yeah. Good, I hope so too. I know other schools have had this program, and it's only as so good as people know about it, right? And so our communications department is doing a lot of things to help promote this, so.
Awesome. Any other questions?
And I just have just a few more things.
Oh, sorry.
Not much, not much, I promise.
No, that's alright.
I talked about farm-to-school, teaching kids where their food is from is really important. You know, some kids don't realize that chickens have bones in them, and that they're, I remember one child who we served grass-fed hot dogs that day, and they drew a picture of a hot dog eating grass. You know, but, so teaching these kids where their food comes from is really important. And we plan on continuing farm-to-school activities all throughout the year. We're partnering with Thompson's Apple Orchard to get all of our apples this fall from them, or as many as possible. And then September and October, you're gonna see weekly, tons of things come from local farms, so I'm pretty excited about that. There's also two school gardens starting, one at the high school, one at Redtail. And I believe the teachers at both schools, there are two teachers that started that, and they've asked for our help to just plan and harvest and all that stuff. So it'll be kind of exciting to have the products that the kids grow in the gardens, they're actually gonna be used in our, in our food service, so be fun. Lake House Cafe. So this is our new coffee shop. This project was first conceived by, I believe, Julie and the kids this fall, wasn't it Julie? Sort of, last, last spring? Okay, and it's just, it's a long process, but we're hoping to open it this fall, late this fall. Communications polled our students via social media, and they came up with Lake House Cafe is the name of our new coffee shop. Lake House Cafe is the name of our new coffee shop. We also went out and tested different coffees. Really wanted a coffee that represented what our school district is about. So it was decided on, after testing a lot of coffee that day, we were all kind of sick to our stomachs, but we decided on a company, it's called Tiny Footprint. And they basically have a negative carbon footprint, because they plant trees for every pound of coffee that they harvest. So I think that message and theme goes really well with what our school district is all about, so it'll be fun. And plus, it's really good coffee, really good. Okay.
Where is it gonna be in the high school, like what area?
Where our vending machines are located currently. So, um, yeah, it's a small area, but.
Are the vending machines gonna be there, or they?
They're going to a different area.
To a different area, okay.
And then lastly here, we're gonna be doing elementary breakfast carts at all the elementary schools. We did receive, you'll have to play 60 grants to get a cart for every school. Our staff is now gonna be going to the classroom area, serving the kids. This will reduce in less ways, because before the kids had to take everything, because we were just basically giving it to the teachers and having them serve. But now we're gonna serve that, and kids can come through the cart very quickly. We tested it at a couple of schools last spring. And choose their items, they don't have to take everything, which is good news. And anything that they do take and don't want, they can actually put aside and we can take that back to the kitchen. So it also does improve our compliance, which was noted, we did have a review late this spring. And it was one area that was noted. We had a pretty good review overall. We've already corrected a lot of the questions and things that they wanted us to correct. We've already got plans laid for that, so this, this is one of them. And that is it. Right now, do you have any questions for me as what's happening this year?
Any questions? We're excited. You'll, you'll let us know how it's going, right?
Yeah, come to lunch anytime too. We love to have you guys as special guests to any of our schools, so. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Lund, now it's your time. High school handbook changes.
Chair Rurrell, members of the school board, Dr. Stallow. Each year I bring to you the handbook changes, are any revisions we have in the handbook. About eight years ago, we quit the practice of bringing the whole handbook, you know, you've already approved those. So what I sent to you is the brief changes we have this year. The first one is in our posting policy, it's essentially what it was before. But what we are doing, you know, posting in our building always required administrative approval unless you were a co-curricular group. What we're going to this year is we're going to four posting areas in the building. Highly visible posting areas where the main traffic for the student body is. But it's kind of a way to control who's putting what up in our building. Very often we'll come in and find something in the back hallway, nobody knows where it came from. It also cleans up our building, we're an equal friendly school and have 2,000 pieces of paper just stuck all over everything, it's not good. So essentially what it's saying is we're going to four posting areas in the building. There'll be designated, one on each floor plus one by the student service offices. Parking, the biggest change this year for that is we've kind of streamlined our services. As you very well know, we're becoming short on parking. So what we're doing this year, and it's not a major change, what we're, we've always had juniors and seniors get first shot at the parking. And so it's seniors, juniors, that went on sale last week. They'll have first shots with 800 parking permits, we don't perceive a problem there. Permits that are left over will be, for lack of better word, raffled off each quarter to students who have a valid driver's license. The reason we're doing that is a lot of students, especially 10th grade students, do not get their driver's license till late in the year. And by that time, those parking permits are kind of, you know, if I got a November birthday, which I do, all of a sudden I get a parking permit for the year. And, you know, everybody else is out of luck. So we will put those permits into a lottery drive every quarter. So underclass persons will have an equal chance each quarter to get a driver permit. We figure that's the best way to do it, and we'll monitor how that goes. And at the end of the year, we'll figure out where we're at.
Go ahead, keep going.
Go ahead.
No, I just, I just had a question. Was there given any thought on sharing parking permits?
Yes, there was, we wanted to see how this goes. I know that many of the schools our size go to a, for lack of better word, carpool permit. Some require two on each permit, some require three. We want to try this first because we think we have ample room for our juniors and seniors, and we figure we'll have pretty good room for the rest. But it is something we will be evaluating this year.
I was even thinking just maybe for the sophomores, you know, like, without some, but I know, I know that's what some of the larger schools have.
It is, it's, can be very difficult to monitor. We'd have to have a lot, larger presence in the parking lot, which we may get to. So it has been taken under consideration, especially with Assistant Principal Schuttinger. It's what they do at Minnetonka, it's what they do at Even Prairie, it's what they do at Wise Adder, we've been. We'll see how this year goes and we'll move on from there. Electronic devices, iPads, cell phones, laptop computers. We just brought all our electronic policy more in line with district policy. Plus now we're gonna have every student with an iPad. In the past, if you've had your iPhone out or your cellphone out, excuse me, they're not all iPhones. If you've had your cellphone out and you wouldn't put it away, we took it from you. Well, we're not gonna take the iPad away from you if you decide not to use it, because that's your management tool. And same with the cellphone. What we're doing is just like we do anything else. If we ask you to put your cellphone away and deal with it, we're not taking the cellphone, we're dealing with the behavior related to the cellphone. And then down below, technology norms at Prior Lake High School. That came out of the Technology Committee that's been going all year, that Assistant Principal Kabushak shared or chaired with the high school as the Technology Committee put together the rules with the iPad. So we wanted to make sure that our handbook reflected those building norms. And again, we'll deal with behaviors as behaviors, we won't take it out on the learning management or the learning tool that they're using.
The permit cost, did that change?
No.
Parking, okay, I was just highlighting, I thought it was $1.50.
No, it didn't, we, we, we may make some adjustments next year just to even stuff out, but the permit price, nothing has changed. It's just the matter of distribution.
Because I believe that's very reasonable compared to most.
There was one, if I'm correct, two maybe cheaper than us. I don't think Shakopee was charging, but we'll see what happens when they put all the ninth grade into the high school and see where their parking lot goes. But we were, we were at the bottom of the South Suburban Schools and all other areas, schools and parking costs somewhere as high as, you know, 250.
Any other questions? Okay. All right, we need to approve the changes as listed to the high school handbook. Do I have a motion to do that?
So moved.
By Dan, second?
Second.
By Chad, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes six zero.
Thank you very much. And just one note with the advent of iPads, we used to print off copies and everything that will not be done. It will be placed on Schoology and teachers will have the students download it onto their iPads within the first day of school, so we can make sure that all students have the policy there. So another advantage of the electronic tools. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, next up is the 10-year long-term facility maintenance plan. Julie and Joe.
Good evening. Mr. Delwo and myself are here to discuss the 10-year facility plan. As you know, this is new this year, the legislature enacted this new law that takes place for next year. But it put, we need to enter the information to our levy system right now for next year's levy. And so what this 10-year plan allows us to do is, what it takes is three components, our health and safety component, of which we received aid in levy for in the past, but it's mainly levy for our district. It takes our alt facility bond payments. And then the third component is the deferred maintenance. And we received deferred maintenance dollars in the past. However, now they're allowing us additional dollars. And those additional dollars come from aid instead of levy. So it's really helpful for our district. We haven't been able to access that aid in the past, because we are not a large enough school district to qualify for the alt facilities bonding program. So is that their correct name, alt facilities?
Alt facilities, that's correct.
So we needed to have our 10-year plan into the Department of Education by the 14th of August, which didn't allow us enough time to come to the board for approval first. And so because it's the first year, MD did allow us to submit it and then ask for approval after the fact. And the nice part is, is if there is an issue or you feel like we need to do something differently, we still have that opportunity. But they wanted that information uploaded into the system. But we still do have an opportunity to make changes if we need to, before the final levy certified, is certified in September, end of summer. And so the first year, what we, we did was we quickly went through and utilized NEXUS to go through this whole process to enter all the deferred maintenance items in there. So kind of our Group B projects. Now, not all of them could fit into this 10-year plan. But we were able to utilize quite a few of those Group B projects through this system. So the first year, it is a phased-in system. So the first year we were able to do 1.17 million dollars between all three components. In year two, it's 1.8 million, in year three, it's 2.5. And so instead of this being, like I said, we shouldn't have to increase our levy certification, we should be able to receive the aid for those items in the future. Any questions concerning this? When we talk about, just so that you know, when we talk about deferred maintenance, we're talking about the roofing, we're talking about building envelope, electrical, plumbing, those types of things. It's not new buildings, it's definitely things that we have.
It's the maintenance on existing. Any questions? I see some roofs on there.
Correct, we spread out the Plan Bs across this 10 years. And there are a couple of exceptions of some new projects that came up since Group Bs were developed. Gymnasium floor at Hidden Oaks. And we couldn't get all of B on here either.
The high school roof on here?
Yes.
Yes.
Has facility seen this, or?
Yes.
It was presented last facility meeting.
It was, okay. Okay, any other questions? All right. Do I have a motion to approve the 10-year long-term facility maintenance plan?
So moved.
By Dan, second? By Ben, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that passes six zero.
Yep.
Thank you.
Just one more thing, this is flexible, so that we can change this at any time. So if we think we need to.
Just because the roof slotted in 2020.
Right, doesn't mean, we gotta wait for, I think you're right.
Yeah, okay. All right. Next up is Julie, I believe, student enrollment.
So I wanted to update you on the enrollment for the current school year. Last time I was here, two weeks ago, we had 18 students come in one day and our enrollment was quickly increasing. And I want to say that trend has continued in the last two weeks. When I was here two weeks ago, we were still about 16 students down in our elementary budget, I mean, actual numbers versus what we were budgeting for. And at this point, we're 18 students ahead. So we have 18 additional students in the elementary level than we have budgeted for.
That's a 30-some swing, 30 students.
That's about, yes, correct.
In two weeks?
In two weeks. So it is definitely, and we have two additional weeks here before school starts. So we know that we will probably see some additional students coming in at that, at that level as well. And all of our levels, most likely. Right now, at our middle school, we're 42 students above our number for budget. And at the high school, we're about 80 students above our number. Now, the difference with the middle school and high school, at the elementary level, those parents are really good about letting us know that they're coming to school here or they're not. It's those middle-level and upper-levels parents and students that we just don't know who's leaving, who's not. And I know I've said this before and you have heard me say this. And, but I want you to know that, and the community to know, that we do usually see about 50 students between the first day of school and October 1, that they have attended, going somewhere else, they've moved, whatever the reasoning is, that they're not attending school here. So that's about 50 kids. And then we usually lose, like I say, that 70 students between that October 1 and the end of the year. And, but, however, we are still well above that number. And if we gain more students now here in the next two weeks, we will be well above my budgeted 206 students for next year. And so I want you to be aware of that, we'll be coming to the board again, going through this process with the budget. And we've just added additional staffing again. We will go through this in, after October 1 and really look at those numbers and see what that looks like and make some projections to the end of the year. And doing a budget update to reflect that, those changes.
Questions?
I do think that this is an indication that we are a quickly growing school district and we are quickly running out of spaces in our, in our buildings. And that's why we've closed open enrollment at some of our buildings. We're definitely, if people want to open enroll, there are certain schools that we do have some space in. But quite a few of them are getting to that point right now that we are reserving that space just for our own, our own student, Prior Lake Savage students.
Julie, I just had a question. So I know you're saying that when, you know, you open the doors, September, whatever, you know, the upper secondary don't always. Did that happen last year though?
Yes.
It did, I mean, we still lost, like, okay.
It did. It did, it happened. We only had one year where we kind of stabilized from October 1 through the end of the year. But we typically do see that, that change.
Okay. All right.
Good news though.
Yeah, more students. All right.
I will take them, or we will.
All right, next up is the District Management Council, study update, Jeff.
Actually, Chair Rurrell, is that okay if I say two comments first? Excellent, thank you, and then Jeff will go ahead and present. At Prior Lake Savage Area Schools, we make decisions with our strategic plan in mind. One of our strategic directions or our goals is to increase measurable student growth and achievement. We're a high-performing district and we want to constantly pay attention to how we ensure that all students reach their full potential. So I'm very pleased that Prior Lake Savage Area Schools will be working with the District Management Council, their Boston-based firm, to study and improve the effectiveness and equity of services for at-risk students with and without an IEP. With continuous improvement as the forefront, this study will be inclusive of multiple programs to allow us to better understand our current programming in special ed, English learners, gifted and talented, targeted services, ADSIS, and title programs. In addition to our collaboration with DMC, we're also partnering with three other local districts, Shakopee, Farmington, and Eastern Carver County. All four districts will study their own programs, serving at-risk schools using very similar methods. However, the outcomes and the next steps will be individualized by school. For Prior Lake Savage Area Schools especially, the purpose of the study is to provide district leadership with a more complete understanding of the demands and the needs of the staff and how we might be able to support at-risk students better. With this information, the district can make thoughtful and informed decisions to ensure that all of our schools are receiving appropriate support and students receive the most effective services. The DMC study is about students with the ultimate goal of raising achievement for our at-risk learners. Mr. Holberg will provide us more details now, thanks Jeff.
Thank you, thanks again for having me up here. Wonderful overview and synopsis, I'm just gonna take a little bit of time, go a little deeper, just provide a little bit more detail to the board about our partnership with DMC, as well as what it's gonna look like here as part of the study. So it's three parts, just the vision, why are we doing this, and you heard a little bit of that, the logistics of the data collection, and an opportunity for you to ask questions too. So the why, you know, and here really are the project goals. It's understanding what's currently happening, what is our current practice for meeting the needs of at-risk, at-risk students. And what do our staff need is part of that study as well. Explore the alignment of best practice, of the current practice with best practice. Are we in sync in some of those areas? We think we are, but are we in sync? Is what we're doing aligned with best practice? And are we seeing positive gains in student achievement? Looking at step two is cost effectiveness. With the programs, being able to deliver a program that's best for kids increases student achievement but financially responsible. And then finally, as we go through the study and we talk about next steps with the recommendations, looking at those staff practices, aligning the best practice, and moving forward to create sustained efforts moving forward to increase student achievement. So in a nutshell, those are the four areas that we're looking for with this project. I'm just gonna share with you a few slides. I'm just going to share with you a few slides that the DMC shared with us. This is a national study, or this is national data. It's a little dated, from 2000 to 2010, but the trends are still holding true. The number of students that are struggling is growing and continues to grow. Higher numbers of students on free and reduced-price lunch, more English-language learners, and students with disabilities. This is a study from the Fordham Institute, and so we have students in our classrooms in Prior Lake Savage Area Schools that struggle. And we have students in multiple categories, and really, is what is it that we can do to really close that achievement gap and really reach them and meet the needs so that they can, you know, we can minimize the struggles that they have? Looking locally, and you've heard about this before as a board, too, looking at MCA II to MCA III, there was a change in the standards. The state is expecting higher levels of rigor for our students. And so from MCA II's to MCA III is reflecting a more difficult task, test, and more difficult expectations for students. More students were tested as being not proficient on those MCAs due to the higher rigor and higher standards. So locally, we know that this is the case, and rigor and what we expect kids to know, understand, be able to do continues to ramp up, and whatever we can do to address the students and their needs. This is, by the way, third-grade tests. This is not overall, all of the NCES, but just as a snippet of third grade. We also know, too, that district funding also varies. The Purple Pupil Unit funding, we get a formula from the state, but there are a host of other factors. So there are some inconsistencies between districts, but there are some similarities as well. When you look at money and funding for special education or other types of services for at-risk students, that can vary much more in greater demand between different districts, and that relative to the percentage of students that are in those subgroups. And how you spend those dollars, how you utilize those dollars, can also vary, too. And so it's just, again, it's understanding, and I think that's one of the values of partnering with the three other districts, is collaboratively, how are we servicing our students? What can we learn from each other? What can we collaborate on potentially? And what do we understand about our own district relative to the other three districts as well in this study? It's also important to define best practice. We talk a lot about that with curriculum teams, with teachers, and the DMC has a very nice definition. Best practice is a strategy proven, effective in multiple settings, cost-effective, and it's practical, given the public school system. Best practice is, it's not one amazing teacher or school, and I can tell you, we have amazing teachers, we have amazing schools here. They're hard to replicate, and there's tremendous things happening in the classroom. We have amazing teachers that work hard every single day, amazing administrators, working very, very hard every single day. We can't just clone all of those amazing teachers across the district to teach all of the students. And so it really is a focus on the strategies that we're using with students to address the struggles that they're having. And so the best practices, this is the research that they're bringing, the backbone. They've identified six best practices that help struggling students at elementary, middle school, and high school. Number one is a rigorous general education curriculum. Two is a sustained coordinated effort on reading all the way through. Extra time to learn for students should they need it. Targeted interventions for those students who identify that they have needs in those areas. Highly skilled teachers, that's where that professional development comes in. And then finally, data to track progress and inform improvement at the beginning, as well as at the end, and then constantly gauging and adjusting the practice that's happening in the classroom. So that's an overview of the why, you know, the compelling reason that, what can we do more for our students that struggle and help them to achieve grade level? Here are some of the logistics of what's going to be happening in the district as we move forward this fall. This first graphic kind of gives a synopsis of the entire year, and it boils down to a lot of data gathering, meeting with staff, leadership, looking at comparing the practices that are happening with best practice, going through, collecting the data, sharing the findings, and at the end, presenting a list of recommendations specific to Prior Lake Savage Area Schools that we can talk about the intricacies of, talk about how to move forward with the recommendations. This is a more complete timeline. It starts this fall and will complete in June. I'll talk a little bit about the deep understanding of practice, but it really gets into the data, schedules, focus group, interviews with our staff, and then looking at the analysis behind the data. So gathering district data, this is where our data warehouse really comes in. A lot of the student achievement data, behavior data, we have already in-house, and we've had it in-house for a couple of years. Engaging in this study would be very difficult without our data warehouse. And so being, so our data assessment coordinator, Maggie Ekram, will be a key player in this portion of the study, as they're gathering the data on student achievement, local tests, state tests, national tests, and then they will start looking at the subgroups. You know, how are our subgroups doing relative to the achievement gap compared to the other districts, as well as to the state nationally? And so it's a lot of mining, it's a lot of behind-the-scenes work, but also, it's the reason why we have a data warehouse, and it's the data that we are talking about now anyways with our Q-COMP learning teams and in our curriculum committees. There will be focus groups, approximately one and a half to two days. The DMC will have two staff here onsite, meeting with staff, classroom teachers, classroom observations. They will do one-to-one interviews, they'll also do small group interviews, just to get a sense of, okay, we have the data, let's bring the voice and perspective to the study. And so they're, you know, for the most part, they happen over the course of two days, and, you know, just gathering that voice behind the data, and the voice of the teachers and the staff that are working with students. You know, when you're trying to paint a reality, you have to have the voice to the study. There will be observations. They will select some classrooms, and as you can see, special ed, EL, gifted and talented intervention, gift inclusion classrooms, and they will go through, and they'll do classroom observations. What's the student experience like? What are they seeing in the classrooms? These are modeled after the principal walkthroughs. They're not meant to be obtrusive, they're not meant to impede the learning, but they're usually about 10 to 15 minutes in length. If, there may be some questions asked, just to clarify what students are doing, but for the most part, this is done in a manner that it's not to interrupt the student learning that's happening or taking place. But again, it's to get another piece of data for what's happening in the classroom. And then staff, we'll be looking at their schedules, too. I think, you know, Dr. Stallow mentioned, too, how can we best help staff with the work that they're doing, working with struggling students? And part of that is understanding how people, how time is being used, how time is being used in meetings, meeting with parents, communications, direct service to kids, paperwork, and just getting a real understanding of how our resources are being used to best meet student needs. And that's the analysis. DMC takes all of that information, puts it into their, I guess, their magic, you know, analysis machine, but comes out of it with recommendations, with a diagnostic report. They bring it back to the districts, they share our findings with district leaders, and that will be inclusive of principals, Dr. Stallow and myself. Just to say, does this make sense? Is this a real snapshot of what we see? It's an integrity check, to see, is this the data that's actually in here that's data from our data warehouse? You know, the observations, the focus groups, does all of this match what we saw when they came through and collected the information? And if there's any revisions, they make the revision, and they finalize the report. And part of that report is coming up with maybe three to five recommendations that the district should consider moving forward, either to continue doing, or to consider maybe doing something, or having further discussions on maybe some different practices, and then bring that forward to the district to say, here's the results of the analysis on how you, as a district, are doing with meeting the needs of struggling students and some things to consider moving forward. So. With that, that's, like I said, a very quick overview. There was a letter that went out to all staff as a general announcement that this study was going to be taking place. We've had our kickoff meeting. We know the two individuals that are going to be working with our district this fall. Once we get Fall Workshop underway, there will be a similar presentation that will give some detail to staff, similar to the one you saw here tonight. And then once we get school underway, there will be more detailed information and plans coming forward that will be shared with staff and principals moving forward as to when things are going to happen, you know, preparing people for what's to take place as far as the study.
Any questions, discussion? Yep, Rich?
Quick question. Reviewing what you discussed here, is there any possible, what are the opportunities for parents as customers with their children to be part of the focus group? I only saw the ability to do online surveys, which sometimes don't give you the right information you need. Will there be opportunity for parents in these focus groups?
I believe there will be. We, at our kickoff meeting, I believe that question came up about parent group or parent focus groups, and the response from District Management Council was, it wasn't in the presentation, but they will customize to help us gather the information we need to best make the recommendations, or best get the picture of what's happening in our district moving forward. So it's not listed in here, but it's something that we will bring back to the DMC.
I hope you may move forward with that.
Okay. Thank you. It's a good suggestion.
Any other questions? I had one. You know, we're doing this with other districts, right? So are we collaboratively sharing the results? Are we, you know, sharing best practices with them, or is it just in comparison to what DMC is requesting us to do? I was just curious. I mean, is everyone going to see everyone else's data? I mean, is that how it works, or?
The partnership will be, yes, it will be Prior Lake Savage Area Schools working with DMC on the national best practice. So there is a one-on-one partnership. The other part is a collaboration with the other three districts, where we will be looking collectively at the results, and collectively at the programs that are happening in all four districts. So there is, it's both.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
And you're still up, right?
I am.
All right. Demographic study.
Yes, in your board packet, you have a review committee timeline and roster for convening the demographic study committee. It's very similar to the roster of individuals agreeing to, that was on the committee last year. We've had some changeover. We still are waiting for some finalized commitments from individuals to serve on the committee. But the first page of the packet provides the meeting structure and topics. It's following a very similar review processes last year, but we're looking to start September 23rd, have a very aggressive meeting schedule so that we can have materials and things prepared for the October work session on the 26th, and then pending, you know, the outcome and discussion from the board at the work session, coming forward to the November 2nd meeting with the key messages and findings from that group for board consideration.
All right. Any questions? All right. Do I have a motion to approve the demographic study timeline and committee roster? By Ben, second?
Second.
By Dan. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 6-0.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And next up is me, with our three-year board governance goal, and I just put in this past year's, I just wanted you guys to kind of get an idea of where we're coming from. The plan right now is to bring those goals and those ideas and kind of talk about them on the 28th of September, and then look for board approval on that on October 12th. So in your board packet on the 28th, I'll have moved over to the appropriate year and added the 2017-18 year. And then, working with Dr. Stallow, we'll kind of go back and forth between, this is how she kind of sets her goals as well, so it's kind of a collaborative, joint thing. So if you guys have feedback or be thinking about that for the board study session on the 28th, looking at timelines, how things are falling in, we do have, I think, some pretty important stuff coming up that is going to take our time and attention, so we want to be planful with it. Any questions on that?
Yes.
Yep.
My insight is the three topics covered here tonight. Is the Innovation Zone, I know is not listed, the DMC study group's not listed, nor is the school munch, or, excuse me, child nutrition.
Okay.
Program listed on here. I think it would be wise for us to monitor those.
Okay.
And progress.
And if anyone else has any feedback in between, between now and September 28th, just email me or let me know, and we can definitely get it in there. So, all right. Next up is Julie, I think, yep, for levy hearing dates and truth and taxation hearing. I'm excited.
As you know, we're working on the levy as we speak. It's due, all of my information is due to the Department of Education by Friday, and then they will compile all that information, and the board will look at, I'll be presenting some of that information, especially at the board work session in September, but we usually open that board meeting up to approve the preliminary levy certification. And then the final levy part of that is the truth and taxation hearing, which is part of our regular December 14th board meeting this year. And so what you're doing is approving that, that information will go out to our taxpayers so they are able to come to hear that and voice their opinion if they have one at that time.
All right. So we're just approving the timeline, basically.
All you're doing.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the truth and taxation hearing at the regular board meeting on December 14th?
So moved.
By Melissa, second.
Second.
By Dan. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 6-0.
Thank you.
All right. And then on to policy, which we have none. Kind of missing it, actually. I'm just saying. It feels a little empty. It's been a couple of months now, but I know we have a meeting in the books.
Yeah.
Yeah, coming up. All right. Administrative reports. Superintend?
Thank you. At Prior Lake Savage Area Schools, our mission is to educate all learners to reach their full potential as contributing and productive members of our ever-changing global community. My report this evening highlights some of the work that we have been doing to help meet this mission. This morning, we had the opportunity to welcome 55 new teachers to our school district. Just as we are proud that Prior Lake Savage Area Schools is a destination district for many families, we know that our school district is also a destination district for staff members. New teachers will spend three days learning about our school district from administrators, mentors, district teaching and learning staff, and they'll be engaged in a variety of activities that will help onboard them. New teachers will participate in a technology camp tomorrow, where they will be joined by 200 returning teachers. Prior Lake Rotary is hosting a breakfast for all new teachers on Wednesday morning, where they will be welcomed by community members. Kindergarten teachers at each school met with incoming students to complete preliminary assessments. This not only greatly is beneficial in measuring reading, math, and social skills, but it's a great opportunity to connect with families and students prior to the start of the school year and begin working on those important relationships. Overall, approximately 80% of our incoming kindergarten families and students participating. Remaining students are assessed on September 8 with a formal orientation experience for all students and families planned on September 9. This week, parents of students in grades 1 through 5 will receive their assessment signup instructions. Dave Lund and Jeff Holberg attended a roundtable discussion hosted by Hennepin Technical College. The focus of the conversation was on partnerships with school districts and high schools to provide career readiness avenues for students, which is very much aligned to what we just heard earlier. We're obviously looking to have deeper discussions with Hennepin Technical College regarding our Innovation Zone and CAPS program. Speaking of college readiness, Newsweek announced its 2015 high school rankings this week, which includes America's top high schools, a list of 500 high schools nationwide that excel at preparing students for college. Prior Lake High School made the list at 463rd. More than 16,000 schools across the nation were considered for this ranking. This places our high school in the top 2.9% in the nation, according to Newsweek. Absolutely. Lots of kudos to lots of people that have made great things happen there. The Newsweek rankings assess schools based on a broad range of data to determine which institutions do the best job of preparing to determine which institutions do the best job of preparing students for college. For the first time, we are partnering with our bus company owners to create a public service announcement ad in the Prior Lake American and the Savage Pacer. The ad will remind the public that school is starting and some basic safety information when driving with school buses present. This ad will run in the September 5th newspaper. And with just two weeks left before school begins, we continue to welcome new staff members, returning staff members, students, and families to the school district as we make final preparations for a great year ahead in Prior Lake Savage Area Schools. Thank you.
All right. Administrative reports.
I have a very brief administrative report, and that is, this is a matter of business rather than anything too exciting for anybody, except maybe our hiring supervisors and our principals and building secretaries. Because in September and October, we are going to start to transition away from the data sheets that you've all grown accustomed to. And we are going to start a self-populating system so that our principals and their clerical staff will no longer have to hand-enter every single bit of that information. The only thing that you will be missing is that important tidbit of where somebody went to high school, which will drop off of the data sheet as well as some of their previous employment. However, you will have their most recent educational institution that they attended and the degree that they received. And you will also see their last place of employment. This will be a very nice thing and will eliminate a lot of annoying busy work. So this is a positive step. I just wanted to prepare you that it'll just look a little bit different. So like I said, we're going to start that process after we get through this hiring season so that we don't need to learn new tricks right at the end here. And then we'll be seeing that change in October at the latest, we're thinking. So if you have any questions, let me know.
All right. Yep, Jeff?
Yes, I have one thing, actually two things to update the board on tonight. Last week, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday, we had our iPad rollout evenings for our eighth, 10th, 11th, and 12th graders. Of course, our ninth grade, incoming ninth graders, the majority of them had their iPads already. But approximately over the last, those four days last week, a little over 2,070 iPads were distributed. Accounts were set up. They were put into cases oriented from the standpoint of getting school logi accounts set up and everything set from the standpoint of coming into school ready to go. Looking, breaking it down a little bit more, approximately 80, 601 possible iPads to the middle school, approximately 80 remain to be distributed. Our high school, we had 2,568 students, of which about 400 remain to be distributed. But we do have Picture Day coming up this Thursday where we will be having the iPads out there for students to also pick them up at that time. As well, we anticipate that we will, majority of students will get their iPads or that remaining 400 will come when they get their picture taken, pictures and an iPad. You know, just kind of to point out here too, the logistics of handing out the iPads and, you know, from the standpoint of getting them into a case, getting things set up, Apple IDs, school logi was an extraordinary task. And there's a few people that I do want to recognize this evening. Corey Sukup, Chris Scheiner, Ben Tressel, and Amanda Fay, our technology integration specialists, were key behind this rollout and working with a couple others. Principal Dave Lund and Assistant Principal Joe Kabushak at the high school to ensure a very seamless and trouble-free rollout. Although Apple did have a problem one of those evenings with the ID, but that was out of our control. A couple others, Jessica McMahon, our digital learning specialist, was also on hand to help. And then we also had several parent and student volunteers. So it was a well-oiled process for when parents came in to get their iPads with students to go through it. And average typically, parents and students could come in. Typically, from the time you walked into the door to the time you left was about a half hour. But we did have some high peak times. Around the 4:30 to 5:30, 6 o'clock time, when we had more people either coming home from work or trying to get in before they went to their evening activities, that was closer to about an hour, hour and 15 minutes that some folks had to wait. But certainly it was trying to do the best that we could to have them come in and to get their iPads. But, you know, a big thank you to those individuals I mentioned tonight with that rollout. And then finally, Fall Workshop is next week, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, where all of our staff are back in full form in their buildings, preparing for classrooms, having orientations and welcome back to schools for families and students. Thursday is our all-district welcome and breakfast. In addition to Dr. Stallow's presentation that evening, that morning, our keynote speaker is going to be Dr. Scott McLeod, who's a nationally-known speaker and presenter on digital learning and 21st century learning for kids. So we're excited to welcome Dr. Stallow and Dr. McLeod on Thursday. So, thank you.
Great.
One more.
Oh, sorry, Julie. Oh, thanks, sir.
I just wanted to update you that the audit is complete. We do have a few cleanup items, but we will be presenting the final audit at the October board meeting with the preliminary audit presentation at the September work session. And then I forgot to give you a few fun facts about our enrollment, so I want to get a chance to do that. Our highest kindergarten class ever at 568 right now is where we stand for kindergarten. Our largest third-grade elementary that I've seen since I've been here at 608 in our third grade. So it's our largest elementary class. We have 664 7th graders this year, which has been our largest middle school class to date. If we see the typical in 7th grade, if by the time they get to 9th grade, that will look somewhat like 750 or 764. So if it's a typical year, that would be something in two years you will be seeing at the high school. Right now, our 9th grade is at 699. So we are bumping right up to that 700 number at our high school class, freshman class. So I forgot to add and give you that fun fact, so I wanted you to know that.
Julie, is every class at the high school over 600, no?
No. Close.
Okay.
We're really close. Our freshman and sophomore classes, both of those are, I have the numbers here. We're at 699 at 9th grade, 693 at 10th grade, 630 at the 11th grade. Well, I'm wrong, 664.
Yeah, I thought it was 10.
You know, we do have some of those kids leaving for PSEO. Some of them are also at the ALC. So that's total numbers between the high school and the ALC.
All right.
I have a question, Stacy, going back to Jeff. How did our network capacity hold out for our rollout nights?
The network capacity for, it worked out well. With the high peak time, there was some slowdown. The first night, there was a problem on the Apple side. We had one of our technology folks reach out on Monday night. For whatever reason, there was a problem connecting there with the Apple ID. That was maybe, that was part of the problem that evening. But for the most part, we had a little bit of an interesting dilemma. A lot of our access points are being reinstalled at the high school. Part of our tech plan was putting in more of the access points to plan for the additional devices. They were installed, but several of them were not hooked up. And so that was also part of the problem as well, too. But they were, but by the time that, after Monday night, recognizing that we had a little longer wait time than we anticipated, we did have Master Technologies Group come in, set those up, and it did go much better, much more quickly.
We should be in good shape for day one?
Yes. Yes.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Any board reports?
I have just one, Southwest Metro, two items. You will be seeing a resolution coming to this board from the state of Minnesota, recent legislation allowing Southwest Metro Co-op to become an intermediate school district. And second, you wanted some policy issues. At Southwest Metro, we discussed medical marijuana and implications for schools. So our policy will have to be updated for that.
All right. Any other board reports?
Yep. I met with Transportation Committee with Jim Del Wu and got to meet the bus owners and had a real good update as to what's going on. We're all set for fall.
Okay, good. All right. Any other? Okay. Next up, I guess, is future events. So we have the new teacher in service that we talked about earlier, August 24th through the 26th. The all-staff breakfast program will be on September 3rd at the high school at 7:30. And we have Labor Day on September 7th, where all the buildings will be closed district-wide. The first day of school for grades six through 12 is September 8th, 2015. The elementary assessment days for grades one through five will be September 8th and 9th. The first day of school for kindergarten through 5th is September 10th. We also have a joint meeting with the city of Prior Lake, September 14th, right here at the DSC at 5 o'clock. And then our regular board meeting for September 14th will follow at 7:00. And then we also, that week, have a joint meeting with the Laker Education Foundation on September 16th at 6:30. And that concludes that part. I think I need a motion to close the session?
So moved.
By Dan, second? By Ben? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Okay. That's six-zero, and we'll take a five-minute recess to close session.